So now I know what it's like when we are broadcasting to the public and the public is looking in on our meeting. It's hard to really make out who's who, but.
Well, what if we did this? Also, we have better audio coming there with just back ordered stuff.
I can hear you pretty clearly even when you were across the room.
Well, that seems to be the biggest concern, but I'm also, I probably dropped a little bit louder knowing it.
I mean, it's a little, it's a little bit of an echo, but.
So now that I'm going to be speaking, let me see if the cameras zoom in on me. Is this a better tool? Then if, you know, if Mike's not speaking, it should go to him. If somebody in the audience starts speaking, it should go to them. We'll try it up. If it doesn't work, we'll turn it off.
I kind of like that. All right, at six o'clock, we have who we need here to open. So Laura, do you want to read the?
Sure, sure. Yes. This open meeting of the Mendon Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's updated guidance on holding meetings pursuant to the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures that was signed into law on June 16th, 2021. This act includes an extension until April 1st, 2022 of the remote meeting provisions of his March 12th, 2020 executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. For this meeting, the Mendon Select Board is convening by video telephone conference as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. This meeting will feature public comments. Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a reminder that if you're not speaking, that you just mute yourself so there's no echoing and that all votes taken this evening will be by roll call. Okay, we have citizen statements and petitions. Let's see, any hands going up? Correspondents, we have a request from Land Use Committee to hang a sign at the Town Hall. Is Ann on here? Or anyone from Land Use Committee? I'm on the Land Use Committee, but.
I can, I can speak to the sign if.
Perfect.
If we had a meeting earlier today, this is the sign for the MVP grant project. I think she wanted to share it with you. So maybe if you want to come back to it later so she can show you. I know they were working on it.
Here she is. She's, she just came in. And we were just talking about the request to hang the sign up on Town Hall for the restoration project.
Hi, sorry, I'm just taking, it's taking a while to get on. Okay.
No worries.
Hi, okay. So, did you all see it or do you want me to share my screen?
Um, I think I have it here. Hold on.
And if you can share your screen so everybody can see it, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, sorry, I gotta find it now. Sorry.
I'd share mine, but it's on my other computer, so not, I don't have that up.
Sorry, this is like slow here. It's loading.
Here, hold on. Can you see that?
Yep.
Yep.
Can you zoom, sorry, can you zoom in, Mark, just a bit, a little bit here? That's probably good there, yeah.
So this for the, um, the grant we received. And do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so this is, or this is the Town Hall campus that we're restoring and are renovating. And we received a grant for $169,000 to put together a plan. And we want to put a sign up to let people know what's happening and to get suggestions. We're going to have a section where they can email or write a written suggestion in and also explain exactly what the project is about. And it will be three feet by three feet. And it's not the exact plan. There will be some changes. One change which will be added is that possibly there's going to be an exit coming out the north side of the old library.
Over here.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay, any questions from the board?
I don't have anything.
I have no questions.
Okay.
I move to authorize the Land Use Committee to hang a sign for the Town Hall Restoration Project at the Town Hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Video, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a 6:15 public hearing. Trying to see what we have that's quick. Consider appointment of library assistant Brenda Whitner.
I move to appoint Brenda Whitner to the part-time position of library assistant at a rate of 1650 per hour.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? Kim, do you?
No, both, both Shelley and Andrew sent over really nice descriptives. I just want to make sure I actually share some of them since I wasn't part of that interview process. It was a panel obviously with our HR coordinator. Andrew and the children's librarian for this position. Hold on, just got to scroll down.
Sorry for jumping ahead to this.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to go through the packet documents. Giant, so I'm scrolling to find the page. There's like so many things in here tonight. And it's down at the bottom. Okay, here it is, just to share. She has a degree in sociology from Framingham State, is a member of a library book club, avid reader, reads 120 books a year, resident of Mendon, been a patron of the library for years, loves to read. She's looking forward to recommending books and authors and she's eager to help in any way. There you go.
Sounds like a perfect fit.
Sounds like ideal. Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Video, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye.
Can we do another one of them while I have that page open?
Yes, you can. We'll go to appointing Dan Baker to as heavy equipment operator.
Yes. So again, Alan and Shelley interviewed a number of candidates after we had another candidate drop out. Dan comes to the role as an ironworker welder from Local 7 in Boston, has lots of different kinds of experience. He's all been a labor on construction projects, did mold water fire remediation, driven forklifts, vector trucks, scepter trucks, septic trucks. He's getting his CDL, hoisting licenses. He lives in Bellingham, has lived in Oxbridge as well, very familiar with the town, looks forward to the position.
I know Mr. Tatro is in the audience. Do you, you want to add anything there?
Dan's here as well.
Perfect.
Perfect.
Yeah. No, Shelley and I interviewed him. We like, again, like Kim said, we interviewed a number of people. And we feel as though that Dan is a good fit for the town. He's nice and young, so we can, we can work him really hot. He seemed very enthusiastic about coming to work for us. I was very excited to bring him in.
Excellent. Lonnie, did you have your hand up to speak?
Sorry, there was just a question in the crowd. I'll throw it up, I'll throw that up if I get it. Sorry, sorry, that question.
Are you following the agenda?
We, we are. Just, we have a hearing in three minutes, so we just jumped to some quick ones to fill that gap and then we'll back to the rest of the camera. Sorry.
Thank you. Any further comments? There are motions.
I move to appoint Dan Baker to the full-time position of heavy equipment officer at a rate of 20.7 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Video, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard, Dan. Stay right there.
Okay, quickly, we can do conservation agent Emily Petrov.
What, what did you say, Kim?
I said I can do the next two, I can do them both fast, no problem. Great. So Emily, as you know, we have been searching. Oh, is there a motion and discussion? But.
No, we've already, go ahead.
So we've been searching for a conservation agent for a while. We've had a number of rounds of interviews. Emily was selected to be appointed. She's a graduate of Framingham State with degree in environmental science. She's got a minor in biology. She's already three courses into her conservation agent certificate program. She's currently working as a conservation permitting coordinator with Metro West in Framingham. She's into conservation and wetlands, wants to move more into conservation role. She's excited to work for the town. It'll be a 10-hour week role without benefits.
Lovely.
Perfect. I move to appoint her to the position of conservation agent part-time at a rate of $30 per hour upon the completion of certification as conservation agent, but there'll be a $1 per hour increase.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Excellent, thank you. And we'll do council on aging administrative assistant, Melissa Rezick.
Yes. The fire chief, the COA coordinator and HR director interviewed a number of candidates for their position. Melissa Rezick was the top choice based on professionalism, computer skill set and project management experience. She's got a bachelor's degree from Framingham State, 20 years of professional positions. She's previously worked for Meals on Wheels. She worked with various computer applications, very confident in those in administrative role, great time management skills and the ability to juggle many projects.
Sounds good. Uh, any questions from the board?
I move Melissa Rezick to the position of council aging administrative assistant, part-time at a rate of $20 per hour.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. One last one. Let's do the appointment for Land Use Committee alternate.
Move to appoint Carolyn Bothwell to the Land Use Committee alternate for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Okay, good. We get that out of the way.
Well, I, can I just add, I gotta, we gotta kill it anyway. I just want to really give my appreciation to all the department heads who stepped up to be, start to become part of these panels and what a difference it makes to have an HR director on board. I mean, talk about a first month or so on the job. I mean, all of, I hired one in three months over the summer and she was able to hire all these in two months. Really, great work. So what a great addition. And thanks to the department heads who stepped up to be parts of those panels. It really actually, it helps a lot.
Excellent. Thank you all. Mike Morali, just so you know, you get a lot of echoing, so I muted you. Just when you need to speak, unmute yourself. So just want you to know that so you don't start talking.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, I think we can.
To open the public hearing for the five-year land use program?
Set, is there a second?
Second, I was muted, sorry.
I know, sorry. Uh, okay, the Mendon Select Board Land Use Committee and Community Preservation Committee hereby give notice that there will be a public hearing January 12th, 2022 at 6:15 PM at the Mendon Town Hall, 20 Main Street, Mendon and remotely. Details for access to the meeting can be found at www.mendonma.gov/SelectBoard to receive comments on the five-year land use program, copies of which can be found at www.mendonma.gov or the Town Clerk's Office. And to hear suggestions for Community Preservation Act funded projects. For questions, email communitypreservation@mendonma.gov. All in favor of opening the meeting, of the hearing?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Okay, Ann, do you want to lead this one as we?
This is. Sure, I, I'm Ann Mazur and I'm the chair of the Land Use Committee and the Community Preservation Committee. And this is just a hearing that we have every year to solicit ideas that people might have for community preservation. CPA funds or for the five-year plan. But I will say that both of our meetings are, you know, totally open to everyone and we take suggestions all year long. So this isn't like the only chance that people get to, you know, give suggestions or ask questions.
Right. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Okay, seeing none. Do we have any, did we receive anything written?
I did not, Mark.
Okay. Well, looks like we've got nothing this year, Ann. Uh, any questions or comments from the Select Board? Okay, I'll accept a motion to close the five-year land use public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I'll accept a motion to approve the five-year land use program.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. Thank you. Okay. Uh, next we have a presentation by the Division of Local Services. We've got Zach, Zachary Blake here who will be kind of talking through some services we're interested in in terms of looking at our financial practices. So Zachary, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. I appreciate you having me on this evening. I'm going to share my screen, so give me a moment while that comes up here. If you could just let me know when you see that.
I can see that, yes, thank you.
I can see it.
Excellent. So as the chairman said, my name is Zach Blake. I'm the chief of the newly named Financial Management Resource Bureau for the Division of Local Services. We used to be called the Technical Assistance Bureau for those who have been around a little while. Just going to give you a brief presentation of who DLS is and what the Financial Management Resource Bureau is and more importantly, what a financial management review is that you potentially might be seeking. So just to jump into this, for those who are familiar with us, the Division of Local Services is the chief regulatory body over cities and towns finances. We do that through a series of bureaus, the Bureau of Accounts, which is responsible for certifying your free cash and setting your tax rate every year through the Bureau of Local Assessment, which is responsible for the certification of property values on annual basis. We also have a, um, Technology Bureau, a Law Bureau, and then there's the Financial Management Resource Bureau, which I lead. The Financial Management Resource Bureau has been around for about 30-plus years. We provide guidance and assistance to cities and towns in reviewing their financial management practices and departmental procedures and policies. I run a six-member team. We all work remotely now. We have deep experience in local government. The folks that I have on my team, I've pulled from serving as finance directors, treasurer collectors, accountants, um, et cetera. I myself, I worked in local government and HR before coming to the Division of Local Services about 15 years ago. This is all the communities that we've serviced over about the last 10 years. It's a couple of little holes that we've filled in over the last couple of months since I last did this map, but just to give you an idea of where we've been, we've covered quite a bit of the state. Our chief products are what we call our financial management review, which I'm going to get into. But we've also played a big role in the Community Compact Program, if you're familiar with that. We've handled a significant number of the financial management best practices. So, uh, large sections of this map, we've been involved in putting together financial policies, constructing financial forecasts, putting together capital plans, uh, working with towns to develop more transparent budget documents. So just needless to say, we've been, uh, you know, throughout the state. The Financial Management Review itself is sort of our chief product. It's a comprehensive report that offers constructive guidance on the town's structure and sort of the financial practices that are going on in the community. Our findings and recommendations are based on onsite visits. We interview everybody that sort of touches finance. So we start with the town administrator, members of the Select Board, we meet with the town accountant, treasurer collector assessor, finance committee members, um, and then other boards and committees that are involved in sort of financial decision-making throughout the town. We also examine a substantial amount of documentation, including budgets, balance sheets, cash reconciliation reports. We look at your payroll processes. We look at your AP processes. We look at your audits. We look at any kind of ratings that you might have through Moody's and Standard and Poor's. We look at your, um, structure through your bylaws. If you have a town charter, we review those as well. And what we put together is a comprehensive report that gives an overview of the general government structure as well as sort of the fundamental facets of financial management planning. So that would be your capital planning, your budget process, your financial forecast, your policies. And then we do a deeper dive into the sort of the procedural related things that I mentioned earlier, payroll, AP, procurement. And then more broadly, stepping back, we look at sort of communication and coordination amongst department heads, Town Hall staff and policymakers like yourselves. And the goal is to develop a, a report with recommendations providing, you know, guidance to be a more efficient and effective operation. It's constructed by nature. It's not an audit. It's not a performance review. It's sort of a check the oil, you know, kick the tires type of a, a product. They average about 30 pages in length and they have anywhere from about a dozen to 20 recommendations generally. The recommendations just from this chart, um, you know, they run the gamut, but overall, we talk a lot about sort of the financial planning aspect. We talk about the roles and responsibilities of, of department heads. We look at individual, um, risks and controls within each of the offices. So if you see here, like cash controls and how cash is handled, reconciliations is always one of our big recommendations. We look at how the assessing office is doing their cyclical inspections. So this is just a sampling of some of the stuff that we look at. Outside of that too, as part of this process, we're always keeping an eye on sort of how human resources and personnel is managed as well as IT. We have expertise in those areas as well. And so if we see, um, some sort of needs in those areas, we can, uh, make recommendations regarding those. So with that, that's sort of an out, a brief outline of just who we are and what we do. And, um, all we need from you, if you're interested in this type of report, is a vote by the Select Board. That gives us sort of permission to come in and work with the town administrator to, uh, develop our product. And it's no charge to the community.
Excellent. Selectman Morali, do you have, I know you, you've kind of spearheaded this. Do you want to talk about this a little bit? And do you have any questions through Zach?
I, I just had, uh, had been searching for a way to do this for a while, specifically between being the FinCom Chair and now being on the Select Board. There's really no, um, one coherent document that, uh, that does all of this that I've seen, at least hasn't been done for a while. So re, speaking to a town resident who, um, you know, who had been involved in these types of, these types of studies really around the area, you know, suggested to me that we're at a sweet spot with a new, uh, you know, financial, you know, financial director and, um, it would be a good time. And of course, the thing is, it's at no cost to the town. And it does mean we can't do other things, but I think it's a great place to start and it kind of gives us a good, um, overview. Even more in depth than what I had realized initially. So I'm completely on board with this. I, I know that, I think, sir, you indicated that you would not be able to do this until the spring because of, um, your scheduling.
Yeah, we have a queue of, uh, it's a popular program, so we have a queue and we'd probably be looking to come out there. Uh, you know, it'd be a conversation with your town administrator, but probably to be as least disruptive as possible. I was thinking right after town meeting.
And, and the other issue is, you know, we, we made a recent purchase and Lonnie, maybe you can talk to this more or, or Kim. We made a recent purchase of updating our, uh, financial software from KVS to a, to a, a new system, which we were planning on using KVS, I believe, for this year. So that, again, all kind of dovetails well that once town meeting is over and we're ready for this, for the next, you know, next year, we're, we start off with a, a kind of a clean slate. That'd be great, I think.
Yeah, just on, on the software, the new software, we just, because of their staffing, we were kind of kicked down the road just a little bit. We're going to be starting that process at the end of January, beginning of February. And that in a perfect world, I, I would say even just push this out a little bit further past town meeting, maybe till after the new budget season in the summertime when we're just slowed down a little bit and we should have the financial software. We might expect, our expectation would be that it would be fully operational by that point, which would be a good time to look over everything at that point instead of coming in the middle of that transition being kind of a nightmare. Just my, that's just a suggestion.
Yeah, well, uh, but, but can't we do at least some of the interviews and things? I mean, it seems like there's a lot of people to talk to, so. I'm not going to obviously argue with you, but I, I think after town meeting sometime in June, sounds like a good, good place to start. You're saying summertime anyway, so it's essentially the same thing, right?
Yeah, and, and like Zach said, that's also a conversation that can be continued with Kim so that we can find the right time and, and make sure it works for everyone and it makes sense.
Yeah, and our, our goal, just to, to, sorry to interrupt, is to be as least disruptive to town operations as possible. We, you know, we've been doing this a long time. We know that folks in Town Hall are very busy. And so we try to be as least disruptive as, as we can.
Sure. Okay, um, since we're on this topic, do we want a motion to authorize the Division of Local Services to provide a financial management review of town operations?
So moved.
Second.
Zach, that's an acceptable motion, right?
It is, yes, thank you.
Great, okay. All in favor?
Tenio, aye.
Morali, aye.
Real aye. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Looking forward to meeting each of you and working with the town.
Excellent, thank you.
Bye-bye. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. And that brings us to six-thirty, which is our FY23 Revenue Forecast Presentation.
You want to do six first, or what do you want to do?
I'm sorry?
You want to do item number six first, or do you want to go right to them?
Um, is, well, I was thinking we jump to seven just because it's six-thirty, but is Kevin Sullivan on this call? Laura, have you, did you hear from him?
Mark, I did not. I reached out a couple of times, and I have not heard from him.
Okay, are there folks on this call that were intending to have that conversation?
Yeah, there are folks here at the town hall.
Okay. I think we're still kind of in a stuck position to continue that conversation until Kevin is able to talk with us. I mean, unless...
Could I comment on this, please? Can I?
Yeah, yeah, just name and address.
I'm meeting Mr. Matthew, three Daniels Road. And I know Dick and Terry here took out the roosters. But we also had an incident this past several months ago with those two very over-ambitious dogs who were imitating beagles in heat all night long. And what, as a good citizen, when I was after getting bounced around a bit, I wound up calling Kevin Sullivan. And I hope he was, I was hoping he was here tonight. Two times I spoke to him about the dogs. He told me he was scheduled to go there. And I said, can you let me know, you know, what, what discussion accomplished? They said, yeah, I'll call you back. How do we call you? I've never had, I've never heard you again. And then I called him again with the same issue. He said the same thing. I'm going to be going over there. It's on my agenda today. I'll call you back as soon as I go there. So now, he knows that this is a gentleman meeting. He hasn't even told you folks that he's not going to be here. So I think you're getting to a problem that you can't even solve because the person that's supposed to be at the heart of it is not doing what you're supposed to do. And I realize he represents multiple men. But if he, if he accepted that job, he should do his job, and he's not doing it.
Yeah, fair, fair.
Okay. Well, that sounds like we need to address that with the chief, too, and have Kim and Dave follow up on that. Because both of them kind of represent our interests in the multi-town agreement.
I can, I can speak and add a little bit of context. I'm currently working with the seven communities that Kevin, the Animal Control, currently works for, because he, he's only one person. So they're trying to hire a second ACO in order to be able to cover the region and to get an additional vehicle. So a proposal will be coming forward this fiscal year to expand that operation to, which is actually managed, as you know, by the town of Uxbridge.
All right.
Question.
All right, is it, is it relative to the roosters? That's what I want to know.
Yes.
Okay.
Since we would, my wife and I were here at the last meeting. There's three roosters now in our area. They go all night long and mostly during the day. So when is the town meeting? Because I think you suggested we would have to bring some sort of addition or signatures. So if Sullivan doesn't show up, we may miss the town meeting to bring the petition. So the next meeting would be the annual town meeting? And you can get a citizen's petition if you, if you would like to, to, I, I don't know what, what, I guess the goal would be to get rid of roosters in the community? Well, at the town vote. No, you, you, you certainly can. That's, you can definitely have a citizen's petition. I mean, I know that I wouldn't be in favor of putting one in from, from the, from the board, but I'm only one person. So, but you can, yeah, you can certainly do a citizen's petition, absolutely. When is the town meeting? What, what's the town meeting date?
May, it'd be the thirteenth, the sixth. It's the first Friday usually, right?
So May, May sixth? And how soon, how, when do we have to get that in before it starts to come in? So if you check in the town first office, she'll be giving you, giving you the dates that you need to hit. But I believe you can start as early as now getting the petition ready. Yeah, and, and for an annual town meeting, I'm pretty sure it requires ten, ten signatures, so.
No, he, I suggest you speak with the town clerk on that to get all the, to make sure that you get the details you need to, to make sure that you're getting everything in on time. And she'll have all the details. So Ellen Agro in the town clerk's office can provide you with all of those details.
Okay.
Chief Curzy has his hand up.
Thank you. I just got off the phone with the ACO. He said he wasn't notified about this meeting. Do you want him to get on in a minute or so?
Um, no, because I feel like he needs to come prepared, and I don't think that would be productive.
All right, he, he, he's saying that for some reason he wasn't notified. I don't know if something got mixed up or whatever. But I will, if you need me to follow up with him in the future and have him meetings, I can make sure I do that, too.
That would be great. Well, what we'll do is we'll set it up for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
We did, but it's just, it's different than what we were told. Because at the last meeting that we were here, someone, this panel, Kim, said she called him directly and texted him. She was emailing him and telling him about the meeting. So this seems to be a pattern, as what Mr. Matthews said with his, with this gentleman. Because he was told when we were here, we heard her say, "I just notified him about this meeting." And now he's saying, "I wasn't notified."
We're losing confidence in this gentleman.
I really understand. But as far as, I just want you to, we're saying he's going to be at the next meeting. It's all I'm saying. And that's all I can offer you at the moment. We're not going to put him on the stand tonight.
I just want to also add, there's plenty of time before town meeting for articles and warrants and things. It's only January, and we haven't even opened the warrant yet. So there's, there's plenty of time and plenty of meetings in order to get something together if you need to, either through the traditional method, which is the select board, or through citizen's petition. So I'm, I'm certain you'll be able to get something put forward in time.
Yeah. Very good. To be continued. Chief Curzy.
All right, so I just got the phone with him again. He just called me back. He did go through his emails. He was notified. He apologizes. It slipped his mind that he didn't see the, he didn't remember when he saw the email. He was looking on his phone. He said he will be here next week. I will confirm it with him, and I'll make sure he's here next week.
Thank you.
See you next week, guys, thanks.
Thank you, folks.
We'll be here.
Okay, now we can go to the FY23 Revenue Forecast Presentation. And is Kim Newman doing this, or is Jody Curzy doing this?
I'm...
Yeah, Kim is muted, so we don't know what she's saying.
I'm saying, this presentation will be done by your financial team.
So everyone.
The assessor is online, the finance director is online, and the town accountant is online.
Excellent.
So, yep. Good, okay. So yes, as Kim said, so I'm Jody Curzy, for those of you that I have not met yet. And together with our town accountant, Eric Kinsherv, and our principal assessor, Jean Berthold.
One sec, I'm sorry. FinCom just needs to open their meeting, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure.
All right, so just to open the meeting to the FinCom for six-thirty, um, fifteen, I'm sorry, twelve. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Jody, go ahead.
Okay. So, as I was mentioning, Kim had alluded to as well, the financial team that we have put together is made up of myself, the finance director, Eric, the town accountant, and Jean Berthold, the principal assessor. And we have together discussed the fiscal twenty-three budget revenue projections. And we look at a bunch of different things when putting these numbers together. And the sheet that you guys have in your packets really is a memo giving insight into the total revenue projection for the next, the upcoming fiscal year. The total number reflects the prior year's levy limit, proposition two and a half, estimated new growth, and estimated total local receipts. And so we're putting that number forth, certainly kicking off the budget discussion. It's a good launching off point to engage in the discussion for the upcoming fiscal year and gives us really that starting point to get some information out there to, to, to start talking about it as a team.
Excellent. Are you, do you have a, is it an actual presentation that we're looking at, or just verbal?
It will do, I'm not sure if you've got the documents or not. It's a three-page document.
Yes, we were sent a document this afternoon. Check your email.
Okay, scrolling.
Um, if we, if we, yeah, maybe you can share the screen.
Yeah, that's...
Can you guys see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you want to zoom it up a little bit?
Yeah, sure, let's see. Well, the controls over the share on the screen, I was able just to click in, take, take it over. So, um, so, um, Jo, you know, Jody put, put together the, the team here. And like she said, you know, Jean and Jody and I basically went over the revenue estimates. And, you know, traditionally, you know, Jean gives the annual memo right here, which is the second page. And basically, Jean outlines, you know, the proposition two and a half revenue increase, which is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, and the estimated new growth, which is two hundred and thirty thousand. So that basically is extra money that you'd have to work with in the FY23 budget. So basically, what we all did as a team, if you look at this, the general fund budget, there's three categories. There's taxes, there's local receipts, and there's the local aid. So the forecast, from what Jean and Jody have, we're looking at six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in extra taxes that we could raise. This, this, the debt excluded debt is like a one-off. So that's, there's no increase or decrease there. There's still some work to do on that. But, um, you know, with Jean's suggestion and Jody's suggestion last year, I don't know if you remember, but there was some excess levy capacity last year. So we were able to reduce the local receipts estimates for motor vehicle excise last year, which is, has a twofold effect. Effect number one is, that should increase our free cash for FY22 when it gets certified. The second effect is that now when we estimate for FY23, although we're raising the estimates by ninety-four thousand, that one million, one twenty-five number actually represents what we collected in '21. So we feel really confident in that figure. That we did some reductions here for the recurring and non-recurring, because there was some one-time revenues that we don't want to include as a recurring revenue. So basically, what we're saying is, we estimated two million, three twenty-nine in local receipts last year, we're recommending two million, four oh eight. So the local receipt increase is like seventy-six thousand. And then we don't know what's happening with local aid. Once we do, we can plug the numbers in. But for now, we're just saying no increase in that. So the bottom line is, to kick off your budget process, what you have to work with is an additional seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in revenue, more than what you had last year. So when the budgets come in, if there's increases, so this will give you like a good, a good estimate to match up to. So when the, all the budgets come, you match them up against the revenues and see where we're at. So like Jody said, the intent was just to get this information out there, get it kicked, kicked off. You know, Jody and I have been in contact with, like, and Jean, working as a team. For instance, like, the ambulance, the fire chief reached out to us and he said, "Oh, we're a little concerned about the revenue estimates for ambulance." So, you know, Jody, Jean, and I went back and forth with him. And this two hundred and twenty-six thousand, he feels comfortable with that figure. So this is a fluid document. This is just a starting off point. Obviously, we have this in Excel and so forth. So as things change, we can adapt. But at least this will allow the town to get the budget process going forward. And I feel really good that, you know, Jody's actually been instrumental. I'm glad you guys had a finance director. And she, she's coordinating, you know, all of us, you know, working together, coordinating the meetings and so forth. So it's, it's, it's really good. So it's good to be on the front end of this process. So that is it for the presentation. Now, the tricky part is stop the sheer. So I don't want to be stuck here. You can see on my emails. So that's kind of what, what we, what we have there. And that's it. So the bottom line is, like, the takeaway is, when you guys are doing your budget, you have like seven hundred and forty-four thousand more than last year. So whatever increases or whatever you have, that'll give you guys a kicking off, a kicking off point.
Great. Finance Committee member Michael Krager has his hand up.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that document can be sent out to FinCom? I haven't, this is the first time I'm seeing that.
I just ordered it to FinCom while, while, during the presentation. Did you get it yet?
Check my phone. There it is. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Are there any other questions on the document? As, as Eric had mentioned, it's a kind of a fluid document. There may be changes as we progress. And so it's a good starting point and it's a good way to start the year. Jody, do you have any additions to that?
No, I was just going to reemphasize that point. You know, the fluidity of the, the document as new information comes in, as our department heads learn more about, you know, the state of affairs within their worlds. I think that ambulance is a great example, just with the number of transports that are up. That doesn't mean just because we're on a certain trajectory that it's going to be sustained for the entire year and upcoming year. We don't know what happens with health insurance rates. There's just a lot of things that are active, and we will continue to closely monitor it and make any adjustments as needed.
Great. Jean Berthold, did you have any additions to the conversation?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. I believe there's a hand up at town hall. Is that Jack?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think it would be important for me and I, and I, and Adventure Safe and Finance Committee to understand, and as to this additional revenue exclusive of state aid at this juncture, but as to this additional revenue, and more particularly as to new growth, what, what position should we be sort of approaching that new growth vis-à-vis the school department? Put another way, precisely what should we be anticipating the additional real revenue is going to be for non-school expenditures?
I guess that's, so you're asking, at this point, do we have an, an idea of roughly our, our fixed costs and what those expenditures are going to look like in terms of the number, Matt, meaning the revenue, the new revenues, right? You, you, that's what you're kind of asking?
Well, perhaps, Mr. Chair, if I could put it a little differently. I recall there was some pretty extensive discussions in the last budget cycle around expectations, settled expectations of the school department and what they anticipated they were going to be able to get in terms of new growth, based historically on what had been a practice. And I recall, I believe it may have been Selective Tenio, who was trying to basically cabin in those expectations on a go-forward basis about how much would be allocated to the school department based on that history. I may be misremembering this, but is that, does anyone else recall that?
Yep.
There were so many questions last year. I mean, I don't remember discussing, I, I don't, I mean, I know of a
I believe, I believe.
I know that we put, you know, we used to, you know, you would have a new growth.
Exactly.
But I think that, you know, last year, what, what, last year was a kind of, it was, it can't, maybe Kim can jump in here, but I, I just, to just to finish my thought, last year was a little crazy, you know, we, and again, the, the request was so big that the, the, even the half of new growth was, we said, well, look, it's, the difference is so big, why, why would we take that small chunk of it off? Just ask for the whole thing in the overall. That's kind of what presented last year. Now, I feel like that that may be, we have to look at their requests now on a, on an annual basis because they've grown over the years that we need to take that approach of, of what are we asking for? Again, if we're going to be asking for a million dollars, why would we not utilize that? If we say the number was 100,000, and again, these are all hypotheticals, right? If the number was 100,000, why would we, we could use it over here on the town side. We're already going to ask for a million.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, I think we may be speaking about the same thing. In other words, the, my recollection is, is that this new growth number was, uh, a, a, there was a bit of a discussion around new growth and settled expectations about a percentage of that new growth right out of the gate being allocated to the school department without any discussion based on past history. And I just understand if that is going to be a path forward here or we have a, a break from that. I just want to make sure that I
Oh, I see what you're asking now. Good.
Yeah. So can we, can we let Kim, uh, just speak on this?
Okay, I can answer all of these questions. So first, so we just heard from Eric that this year's revenue is about 774 surplus, right? That includes everything. Just as an example, last year, the school's budget request came in at 898,000 initially. So that shows you that they asked for more than everything that we brought in an additional revenue in a year, right? So in previous years, the request hadn't been as high and we had a policy of giving them 50/50, which was half of new growth and half of 2%. So that 50/50 number was 315. And because the gap between 315 and 898 was so extreme, we couldn't fund, we couldn't even fund the 315 almost. And so we said, let's, if you're going to ask for more than 2.5%, it's going to be an override. And I think the point the board was trying to make last year is, you know,
Oh, you muted.
It's been a practice. It's not a policy. And in affluent times, we've been able to do that. But now to do something like that or to make that promise in advance, we are basically promising to potentially cut town services in order to fund even the 50/50 request. And so I think it has to be judged year by year based upon where we're at. Um, and I think going forward, I know they were upset last year because we didn't just give the 50/50, but we were in no position to do so.
Yeah. And I think that, um, Jack, along those lines and from what I had thought through last budget cycle was that in the past, there was always this Menden drives the bus, Menden's number drives, uh, the revenues for, that kind of like dictates the budget for the schools. And I wanted to pull us back from, um, being that driver and more about actually looking at, the school should be looking at their expenses, building their budget off of that and not building their budget off of expecting to get half of our new revenues because Menden and on their town government, we were getting to a point where we couldn't commit to giving that half. So it needed to be more of a conversation on an annual basis as opposed to that expectation being set annually. That was my, that's my thought on it. It, it, it's just, we can't commit that money automatically every year. It should be a conversation that happens.
Yeah, that was very recollection, Mr. Chair, of what you and I believe the rest of the board described in the last cycle. And I just wanted to confirm that that was still the case. That was my recollection. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nick, I'm assuming a FinCom member, Nick, that, who's got his hand raised?
Uh, yeah, um, just, and I, and I, maybe I missed it, just for clarification, looking at, uh, this year's number compared to last year's number with the quote found money added in, what do those two numbers compare? What do we look at with the?
I think last year's new revenues, last year's new revenues were 630.
That's what the, the quote found money added in.
Right. Yeah. And then, and Kim, you can, or whoever, uh, the financial team can correct me, but this year was over 700, right? I don't have that number in front of me.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you, Eric.
Okay. So we're about 100, about 100,000 more than last year.
Approximately.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions on, on that, Nick?
Nope. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from FinCom or the select board or the public?
Question on the, uh, new growth mark. Um, is that, what percentage of that is considered? Do we know what percentage is going to be residential versus commercial? Or I know the number was like 230,000. I just didn't know if there's any way to decipher how, where that's coming from exactly.
Maybe a question for Jean?
There's no, there's no estimates to break it down into commercial or residential.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything further? Very good. That's a great way to start this conversation and, uh, sounds like we're, we're all on the same page and appreciate my financial team's work on this to, to guide this process this year.
Can I make, just to, I just want to kind of reiterate that if we're sending out financial memos, even if it's, you know, an hour before the meeting, let's be sure that we're including the, the FinCom group on there so that they're getting these, even if it's that short of time. I mean, I know we just got that email too. But just be sure they're getting these, these, these documents and whatnot. We don't need to forward to them while we're here. Thanks.
All right. Okay, next we have, um, consider marijuana host agreement. Do we have? Denise has her hand up.
No, I really don't.
Denise, your hand is up and you can unmute and speak.
Okay, yes. Uh, my name is Denise Tice and I'm one of the representatives of Canapreneur Partners. And, uh, we're seeking a host community agreement, um, excuse me. Uh, in, in, on Milford Street, 47 Milford Street, uh, for a cultivation and, um, manufactured processing. At the front part of the building, we already have a host community agreement for, um, a recreational dispensary. So we're just looking to get the agreement for the other two licenses on the back part of the building.
Very good. Kim, have, has Cindy reviewed this with you?
Cindy's also online, but this is the same exact agreement that we have offered to all of the others exactly. It's got the, um, 3% and the $3,000 for local contribution. It's identical to all the others.
Okay. With that, I'll accept a motion unless Cindy, our town council, has comments.
No, I've looked at this and I believe I spoke with someone on their behalf, um, because initially they, this is an expansion and there were just some stumbling blocks in the language, but this, like Kim said, is what we've pretty much got it narrowed down to in all of them.
Okay.
I moved to authorize, I'm going to enter into a marijuana host agreement with Canapreneur, LLC, 47 Milford Street.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Video, aye.
Rally, aye.
Real aye. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Consider trailer permits for Habitat for One Locust Hill Drivers, two trailers at the location. Uh, Laura, I know we had received a concern from a resident in that area about the trailers. And do we have anyone on the call that is submitting the permit request?
The person, um, from Habitat, Dave was supposed to be on the call. Um, and I, I don't believe that he is. Let's see here.
Don't see another Dave other than our chief.
Hold on. Where is the, where is this?
This is, uh, Misco Springs Development.
What are we talking about? The trailer? Their office trailer?
There's, yeah, there's two office trailers.
But this isn't, this isn't residential. This is just a place for them to conduct business at the construction.
So that, yeah, so this is an office, this is the office trailer. Where's the second one? I know there's one in front of the old Misco Springs building, but it's their office trailer to build a subdivision.
It's right around the corner. Just saying that.
There's another one?
There's another one. I live right near that as well.
Yeah, there's another one on the, on the back side of it.
I believe it's, one of the new roads that's adjacent to Misco Springs is another one right there.
But these are not live-in trailers. These are trailers for, uh, Mike's, Mike, you're muted if you're trying to say something. Sorry. Yeah, so these are, they're, they're, again, they're trailers to, do we, do we require a trailer permit for these?
I believe so.
Yes, per the, the general bylaws, it's business or residential.
Yep.
Application indicate how long they wanted the permit for, how long they thought the trailers would be there for?
No, it didn't. They've been there for a long time and only because somebody had a question about permits, did it come to my attention. And I think that people really don't know that they need to get a, a trailer permit from the select board. So I would hope that maybe the building department would be willing to put this on whatever kind of correspondence they give to anybody that's applying for a building permit, that if they need a construction trailer, a sales trailer, that they come to the select board's office to obtain a permit.
So I, I, I'll, you know, again, this, this comes down, this is almost like that, that, the, the, the loom permit. You know, where we have this crazy extra loom permit, uh, when somebody's building a subdivision that they have to, just for loom, if they're going to remove any of it, that we're taking off because there's excess, that they have to come just for that special permit when everything's already been approved. And any other kind of material can be taken off. So if we're talking about, uh, and this may be another one of those things we should adjust, that with a bona fide, you know, certified subdivision project, an office, uh, uh, an office trailer on site is not an abnormal thing, especially in a subdivision that size, then why do we need to have another permit just for them to conduct the business of what we've already told them they could do? But that's just my opinion, I guess.
Well, I mean, it's again, it's, it's a conversation to have coming into, uh, annual town meeting. Is this something we want to try to, to, to change so that it makes more sense? Because I, I do agree with you. I, I don't feel that especially around the business trailer piece, that it necessarily needs to come before us if, if it's gone through the planning process and, and they have the permits.
I guess, I guess my only concern is if, if the trail has really been there for several months, why somebody who's in the enforcement area hadn't brought it to our attention before this? But I do agree that, you know, if, if they go in front of the planning board, it's all been approved and I, I don't know how you don't, uh, how you, I mean, you need a trail like this. You need it, you need something on site. So it just makes sense to be part of the planning and why make them have an extra, you know, extra, I mean, I know that we used to have trailers, a trailer park in town and it used to be on Bates Street. At least that was one of them and, and maybe it's a leftover from that. But certainly those are residential trailers. They weren't, you know, business trailers for a particular, uh, event. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, up on the, uh, up on the pipeline, on the other end of Bates Street, near, near Thayer Street, there are trailers there for their construction sites. Does that mean that they're supposed to pull permits too? They went in front of us and talked to us about, you know, their hours that they were going to be running. Should they have a trailer? Should they have a permit for that too?
Yeah.
Change it.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we should look at for, um, is a possible change along with that loom, I am. Um, but I mean, just for the essence of time, I moved to authorize the, sorry, I moved to authorize two trailer permits for Habitat, Inc. at One Locust Hill Drive for a period of 48 months or until the road is accepted by the town, the town meeting. You know, that kind of ending the, the subdivision bill though, I guess. Is everybody okay with that?
Well, I, I guess my question would be, is there a, does the planning documents that lay this out lay out any kind of a, an endpoint when it's supposed to be done? Because it would seem like we should just match the permit to match whatever's on the planning document.
I do believe that the bylaw, I, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think it says that it's a, a one-year permit.
Mr. Chair.
Six months.
Six months.
Okay, six months. So even less than a year.
Oh yeah, you're right. It is six months. So, so every six months for four years, we'll come in and do this. I amend my motion to six months.
And I second that amended motion.
Thank you.
Am I resident of Locust Hill? Could I jump in here for a second?
Hold on, hold on. Yeah, just announce your name and, um, you can speak.
My name is, my name is Karen Feldman. I live at 93 North Bridge Road, which is actually, the driveway is actually on Locust Hill. Um, six months after we moved into this house, that business trailer appeared at what is, I guess, One Locust right across from our house, um, where there's kids, you know, riding their bikes. That, that business, they use that as, um, you know, people come in there and meet with the designer and are picking out, you know, finishes for their home. And any, it's like a parking lot across the street there and people are using our residential driveways to turn around when they're done with these meetings. I, I complained and found out that there was no permit. They, they then moved that trailer. It is not, no longer at One Locust Hill. It is now adjacent to the second trailer, the one that's at, I guess, 89 North Bridge. So they are now sitting right next to each other in front of the stone building that was part of, um, the bottling company. If it remains there, that's okay. But if, if you're giving them permission to move the trailer back to Locust Hill where it's now full of homes, um, that were not there when they originally drew up the, the plans, it, that, that's not okay for, with the residents. Um, for them to be running a commercial business on a street with young kids riding their bikes. So I think, I think there needs to be a clarification if the approval is for the trailers to remain where they currently are at this moment, which is two right on top of each other on North Bridge Road, which I thought constitutes the trailer park and is not permitted by the town, um, versus relocating back to Locust Hill.
So my, my, hold on a second. Yeah, the addresses would be, the address is One Locust Hill Drive. Now, if I'm not mistaken, I don't have the plan right in front of me. Locust Hill is the, is that, is the first entrance right next to the Misco building, correct? The bottling plant?
Correct. Correct. And, and that's where they had their trailer for a period of time until I brought it up and they subsequently moved it. So I don't know if they're asking for a permission to go back to Locust Hill or to just stay where they are.
Hello.
Hi?
Oh, you can hear me. Yeah, I'm Fred Lappam. I'm with Shea Engineering. Uh, I just figured out how to unmute myself, I think. So, uh, I can answer any questions that you may have.
So, if I may, so, um, Fred, uh, on, on the Misco property, I know that the, the building is on um, North, North Bridge Road and then we're talking about One Locust, what would be and then we're talking about One Locust, what would be, is Misco Springs the building on One Locust? Or is One Locust adjacent to Misco Springs out back?
It is, it is on the property that goes around the corner, you can call it One Locust, but the stone building sits on two existing lots. So, the intent of the owner, I know, is to keep the trailers where they are now. He agreed with whatever happened there, I'm not sure how the original location of one of the trailers right next, right opposite 93 North Bridge Street, I'm not sure how it ended up going there, but they agreed, they moved it. It's got easy access now off of North Bridge Road, nobody is gonna have to park over there, there's plenty of parking where the trailer has been put. So that's what they'd like to do, they'd like to leave the trailers there.
Okay, great, thanks for answering that.
Yep.
Jean Berthold has her hand up, is this, go ahead, Jean.
I just wanted to mention that in the past, contractors always have trailers. I don't know who in the past told them they needed to come in for the permit, but they would normally come in and get the six-month permit from the Board of Selectmen. The building inspector would go and inspect where it was, they knew they had six months, they had to renew it if they needed it for longer, and I think the intent of it was just to make sure that when they are done, the trailer is removed. And as the town doesn't permit trailers, this was put in place to allow them to at least be permitted to have one on their construction sites.
Got it, thank you. So, do we need to, does the, does the application need to be amended for the address?
You could, if you were gonna amend the address, you can keep it as One Locust Hill Drive. There is no other lot called One Locust Hill Drive, and the other lot that you could use is 83, that is an existing lot, and the stone building sits partially on each one of those lots.
And Fred, is that 83 North Bridge Road?
Yes, 83 North Bridge Road is directly adjacent to the stone building.
North Bridge Street.
North Bridge Street, yes, thank you, Jean.
So, I'll amend my motion to just even be a little bit more specific, that it would be, the trailers are permitted in front of the stone building, or to the side of the stone building, on the North Bridge roadside. Again, that way if they're gonna move in front of any construction that needs to be there, if they're gonna move to the right side of the building, I'm sure that that's fine.
And I just want to be clear, the resident indicated that she brought this concern to the people developing the property, and they did move the trailer to an acceptable location, right?
After six months, and only after six months of complaining and contacting the select board.
But where it is now is acceptable to you and no one else has complained?
Correct.
All right.
Well, then I'll second the amendment.
All in favor?
Dino, I.
Morally, I.
Real I. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, can I answer?
I'm sorry, who's that?
Mike Jobs put a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead.
Second. All in favor?
Hold on, wait, you got some people online, Jean, can you unmute?
Yes, what?
No, I'm sorry, wrong Jean, Jean down, sorry, sorry, Jean.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Yeah, just, is there any other FinCom members on, yeah, there's...
Nick, Nixon.
Yeah, Nick, why, there was one more, wasn't there?
Yeah, we have Nick.
Yeah, Nick and Mike, yeah.
And Mike Crager. And me and Mike.
I'd like to second that motion, but before we vote on it, I would like to have the chairman announce when our next meeting would be. I recommend it for next Wednesday night.
I agree with that, second that, does that work for everybody else? Let me see, and I had, yeah, that works for us, Mike, is that gonna be a meeting with us?
No, I think...
That's the second meeting, okay, that's the second meeting, I believe, correct, Mike?
That's correct, I think we should meet on our own.
Yep. I understand, but I, hold on.
Police and Fire, I believe, are scheduled for the 19th.
I don't have that, I'm confused.
Yeah, we said we were going to meet for the budget presentations, and then the Tuesday after, on that following week, we're gonna meet individually.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, so that would be a joint meeting with us next week, right?
That's Police and Fire.
Yeah, okay.
Budget presentations would be a joint meeting between FinCom and the select board.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's Wednesday, not Tuesday, correct?
Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
Correct, next week? No, the 19th is a Wednesday, then you guys are gonna meet the following...
We were looking to meet on our own, I just know that it's scheduled.
Oh, sorry, do you have that open, what's available next week in the room, whether it's Wednesday or Tuesday?
The Police and Fire meeting is on the calendar right now, 6:00 PM, 6:30 PM on January.
On Wednesday.
FinCom's next meeting should be Wednesday, as a joint meeting with the select board to review the budget presentation from Police and Fire, and then the Tuesday after that, we will meet individually as a committee to discuss what we just heard, and then anything moving forward.
That's correct.
Okay, I got it.
So the motion to adjourn was seconded?
Yep, I believe the motion was seconded.
All in favor?
All right.
I.
I.
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Okay, next we have, consider conservation restriction for 10 Southwick Street. Ann, are you gonna speak to that, or is ConCom here to speak to that? Or none of the above?
I mean, I can speak to it, it's a ConCom thing, but it's the conservation restriction on property that the brewers own, and it abuts the town forest, and so it's all agreed upon, but it just needs signatures now.
Okay.
And the select board, you need to vote on signing it.
Got it. Questions from the select board?
I moved to sign the conservation restriction for 10 Southwick Street.
Second?
All in favor?
Dino, I.
Morally, I.
Real I. And then, so we need to go and see Ellen for signatures, right, Ann?
Yes, it has to be notarized, and she has the copy of the conservation restriction to sign, yep.
Excellent, thank you. Consider Town Hall well-sighting proposals. Kim?
That's us, right, and then following week after that, there's a joint.
Second.
Lonnie, the conversations in Town Hall are really overtaking the meeting, can those folks move their conversations out of the room? Oh. Thank you. Go ahead, Kim.
Hold on, just pulling up the document. Okay, well-sighting, correct?
Yes.
All right, scrolling all the way down, all right. As you know, we've been working with McClure Engineering in order to get assistance with DEP and to do some specs, and we did some quotes for bid proposals, we received three, you have a document in your packet that shows the calculation, sorry, that was done by McClure, with the lowest being Richardson, Well &amp; Pump at $19,907.75.
I don't know if there was a horse running through your house?
It is an actual horse running through my house, he just threw his bone up in the air and then smashed onto the ground, so, you know, he's 125 pounds at this point, so let's just, you know...
Already?
Give him a break, yeah, he's eight months, so, if he's bored as heck, I've been sitting here and he keeps coming by and like, but anyway.
Okay, questions on this? We know we need to do it.
Yeah, yeah, so my only question is, it's what calls well-sighting proposals, so do we already know this is for the well, or we're doing a exploratory? Muted? Still muted.
So, this is for the entire project that we bid, so McClure put the specs together, and then they're assisting us with actually working with the company, you know, so that we don't have to pretend to be well experts while they're out here, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I like the fact that Richardson came in low anyway, just because they're a local company within, you know, the next town over, so.
Yeah, hopefully a local company won't put a well under the building.
So what, let's rephrase that, we built the building over the well.
Sounds like Menden.
Old Menden, old Menden.
Right, old Menden, okay, we don't have a motion yet, right?
I move to award the Town Hall siding project to Richardson Wells &amp; Pumps in the amount of $19,907.75.
What is going on?
Who has a card on the amount?
Wow, all in favor?
Morally, I.
Dino, I.
Real I. Thank you. Oh, my favorite, consider Town Hall painting bids. Kim, you're muted.
I know, hold on, I'm scrolling again through our 10 million documents. So, we went out to bid for the Town Hall painting, we were specific with our RFP, we basically modeled the one that Milford used, you may remember last year I had spoken with Milford, and I'd received basically an estimate on what our project would cost based upon their project, and anyway, we got that amount approved at a meeting, and so I'm happy to say that we received two bids. One of, but only one of the two companies actually came to the Town Hall to do the walkthrough, we did do the reference checks on both, both came out fine, but one has more experience in dealing with historic structures in Town Halls, and so my recommendation to you is to award the bid to Fox Painting.
Very good, and so, did, this isn't the company that did Milford Town Hall, or it is?
It is.
Okay, I'm quite impressed with that. I have to say, I have pushed for this for years now, because it is imperative that this building be painted and fixed before it turns into more of an eyesore than it already is. And so I'm so happy that after literally years of me pushing for this, that we're finally here, so. I'll accept the motion.
Can we get a couple more bids, please?
Oh, no, we're not.
So, so my only question is, I know you said that only Fox Painting came and did the walkthrough, but, I mean, it's essentially 100,000 versus 65,000.
Well...
Any idea why?
I don't have a reason as to why the price differential, but I can tell you that one of the companies specializes in this type of work, and one of them does sort of, they do town-related structures, but not to this capacity.
Well, the fact that this company did Milford Town Hall says everything to me, that's, that right there makes me very comfortable.
I have one quick question, Kim, on regardless of the bidder, would if they run into any kind of damage, you know, was there any amount of contingency they have in there, or is that gonna be all priced out as they find it?
We have some money in contingency for potentially just that reason, that is not within this bid. I would anticipate there will be some additional work, but that would be an add-on to this.
Okay.
And obviously they have liability insurance, right?
Yes.
We have a question or a comment from Kathy Schofield?
Hi, Kim, I just wanted to find out if they are, I'm assuming that they're aware of all of the rot that's taking place on the exterior of the building, and that is all included in the quote?
The company did a walkthrough of the building to see the conditions, and we've included, I believe the language within the RFP says "basic repair", but if there's anything more elaborate than that, I would, I mean, you'd have to ask Cindy, but I mean, anything beyond basic is going to be in addition in the contract.
Okay, so we could probably expect that it's gonna be a little bit more, I would think, and that includes painting the columns and scraping them.
That building, I'm sure, will be scraped down every little inch of it.
All right, Mark.
If it comes out looking like Milford, it will look pretty darn good.
Yeah, exactly, but obviously the condition of our Town Hall is a little more challenging than the one in Milford, so.
I don't know.
I would disagree, the Milford one was in very rough shape when they made it.
Really?
I agree with that, it really has been neglected for a long time.
All right, well, that's...
I just, does it, does it make sense to delay this until we just follow up with them a little bit more? Or is that, of course, that also explains, no, but if this price differential, if one did a walkthrough and looked at it and saw the rot, and the other one didn't, and you're telling me that this includes basic repairs, Kim, so they did indicate they were gonna repair some of the rot already, they saw it there and expected it?
You're muted.
They had to assess the current conditions of the buildings and take into account what they saw, which is why we required a walkthrough, and then their bid is based upon, it's actually slightly lower than what they had estimated to me last year when I had asked, so I'm guessing that's good, but knowing, I mean, I don't want to jinx us, but my guess is there are some parts of this that probably will need a little additional work.
It's in the dryer. Oh, is that your dog?
It was the dog.
Yeah, look, I'm okay with the fact that we require a walkthrough and the other company didn't show up. You know, if the RFP included basic maintenance or basic repairs, I would get it, if we've gotta replace half the siding, I'm sure that's not included in, but if we've gotta replace a couple facial boards that are, you know, at the top or something or down the bottom, and because they rotted out, I assume that that would be, can be, to me, considered basic, I would again defer to Cindy, however, I would be inclined to put this forward for the vote. It's, as a matter of fact, I was just standing across the street today looking at it, saying, yeah, that's, we need to get that done, so.
Okay, Nick, you have your hand up?
Yeah, and not to beat a dead horse, or the horse that's running through Kim's house, just a question on the specs of the two bids, you know, did they spec similar paint, or, you know, just trying to get at what Mike's question is around the difference in cost, is there anything that you can sub out, Kim, as to why it's driving the difference in cost? Is there anything that you can sub out, Kim, as to why it's driving the difference in cost?
Let me take a look, hold on one second.
If I had a guess, my guess is the walkthrough is one really dictated price.
That, that's my sense. I mean, the, the other one would be at sixty-five and then they find forty thousand dollars' worth of additional work that they would need to do.
Yeah, I mean, that definitely makes sense. I'm just curious if there was any kind of specs that one spec did, you know, a lower grade of paint or something like that, that's, you know, that's resulting in that lower cost. Or warranty or anything along those lines that are different?
I'm looking at the submission now from the other company. I don't see anything significantly different that would warrant that much of a differential. Nothing jumps off the page in me.
Okay. Further comments, questions?
I move to approve the Town Hall painting project to Fox Painting Company in the amount of ninety-eight, sorry, is that right or is it ninety-nine with the extra thousand?
I'll approve it, up to ninety-nine, if you want to.
Yeah, up to ninety-nine thousand.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenny, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Thank God. All right, we're almost done. Most, annual license renewals.
So I'll make a motion on this. Before I make my motion, just because I don't know exactly what, I'm sure there's companies in here that I do some work for. So just want to proceed with, before I proceed, that I do, companies that I own do do businesses with businesses in the town of Mendon that are likely on this list. And my approval for these or my voting on these has nothing to do in any way with the businesses that I do with the businesses in town. So that being said, I move to approve the two thousand twenty-two annual license renewals per the attached list.
Uh, second.
Okay.
Discussion. All in favor?
Tenny, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Okay, consider common virtual license for ninety-five Oxford Road Hideaway Pizza.
I move to approve a common virtual license for the Hideaway Pizza, Le Plan Inc., ninety-five Oxford Road pending your receipt of our positive routing slips.
Second.
Any discussion?
I do eat pizza from there, just saying.
All right, all in favor?
Tenny, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. Okay. Update on Town Newsletter and Personnel Policy. Kim, do we, how is the Town Newsletter going?
So we have received nine submissions, which is pretty good. So we can start putting together one initial newsletter. I'm gonna put them all together in a format this week and you guys can take a look and see if that's how you actually wanted to, to roll out or if you had something else in mind.
Sounds good.
I don't know if you think if nine is enough or you want something more than that? If you want me to push harder for all departments or all boards?
Frankly, all departments should be submitting something. Otherwise, it seems like, I mean, there must be something going on with.
Well, my initial request was to boards and commissions, thinking that they had a lot. And then I had some departments submit. We could push to departments, but we are doing the annual report right now, which is basically how departments report, right? So we could, I mean, to me and the way I've been explaining it to them is if it's something that's coming up, think of like an article on a town meeting that's, you want people to know about, that's something you want to submit, right? So I can send it out one more time and see if we get anything else, but I'll start putting it together and you can tell me what you think.
Got it, perfect. And then I was curious to know, I know that we have our HR coordinator in place and is, is becoming familiar with the town and has done some hiring, so I'm sure she's very busy. But has there been any progress on the personnel policy or telework policy that I?
Yes, she and I have sat down, have sat down twice to talk about both things. She really wants to be able to come to a meeting to, to meet with you all and to discuss and get a better idea. She has the documents, the original draft that we got from the grant and then the edits that Tanya was working on. She has all of those things. I'm, I'm trying to get her on an upcoming meeting. She coaches at night and so we're trying to make it all come together. But I'm anxious for you guys to meet with her. I mean, she really is doing a great job. So we'll try to get her and in her probably, you know, whenever she, whenever she doesn't have her next basketball game, right, I'll get her here, right? So.
Sounds good. Discuss Town Common Concepts. Lonnie, I believe you had.
Yeah, sorry, I'm off my chair. So it stems from the Master Plan Committee. It was some discussion about, you know, gazebo area with some, it, it, last night when I, when I talked with Lisa Hilton about it, it really came down to, she kind of said, think about like the Hopington Common that's like where the marathon starts, although we don't have a space that large. You know, we do have Farmer's Park, but it's already kind of got its thing going on in there. And I think that if we do, if eventually we get something to happen with the, 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 the old Fino Land, again, it first started, the conversation came about the corner that the people still own, kind of, you know, kind of strategic property right now and probably not something that would be easily purchased for a reasonable amount of money for, you know, as, as town would consider. However, that, if we, if we successful in getting the Overley District and, and something happens with the, the old Orchard Property, that possibly in the conservation area, it was something I, I was gonna talk to Ann about it at the next meeting, you know, what can we do close to or in the conservation area as far as kind of parkish? You know, is a gazebo doable or do we do it just on the outside of it? Well, you still have the, the other area. But again, I don't want to get too in-depth with it to draw, draw the meaning out, but maybe at the next Land Use Committee or CPC meeting, we can, we can discuss that. But, but those were kind of the areas. We looked at some other areas that also that were town-owned land as far as kind of in the area, what were we gonna do with the campus? But as well, there's, you know, there's a couple of other pieces, but they're not really strategic to the Route sixteen area or to that walking area. Now with the new sidewalks, everything we're gonna have on the Route sixteen area, to be able to take that part of this downtown area, although you do have to cross Route sixteen. However, that's kind of where we went with it and we just got some ideas. We're gonna go back and forth and, you know, as, as we progress with things, we'll be able to maybe fit that in somewhere, okay?
Very good. Any questions? No? Brothers of the Brush Block Party, are we, do we have any?
Yes. So we had our first meeting, so we did have our first meeting this past Saturday. We're gonna do meetings every Saturday at two o'clock here in the Town Hall Meeting Room. For anybody that wants to volunteer, we're gonna need plenty of help. We just kind of threw up some crazy ideas in the air last week and then started talking about Italy, how, how would we utilize it? Things we could add to it to make it. We want to try to incorporate the town's history into the whole product as well as, you know, to maybe get the schools involved a little bit to have, if the kids and adults want to do scavenger, we're thinking about scavenger hunt for the history of the downtown of Mendon. And again, just throwing a ton of ideas around at the moment. And then, so again, we're, been talking with Lisa Hilton. She wants to, she, she wants to jump in and help. So we're gonna be here every Tuesday, I'm sorry, every Saturday at two PM. Moving forward, we're going to use the, we'll make it a hybrid meeting. So if people can attend but want to still stay involved in it for whatever reason, that we'll be able to have you be able to join remotely as well. So if you're interested in assisting, just reach out to me and I'll get you added to the list so you have the link. And possible we can even get it on the website for people that want to join in too.
Awesome. Sounds like it.
But we're looking for maybe second week of September or last week, August, second to last week, August, date at the moment. Just trying to figure out what the best would be for, I know it's for kids, not, I know kids are coming, obviously coming back for vacation end of August. Most people are home in that second week. The kids are kind of settled in school after the first week. So it'll be a fun weekend, you know, but not do it on later.
Awesome. Consider approval of meeting minutes?
I move to approve meeting minutes to six nine, nine twenty-two, six thirty, ten eighteen, one seventeen, sorry, eleven seventeen and eleven twenty-two, twenty-one. Muted?
Second.
All in favor?
Tenny, aye.
Morally, aye.
Real aye. And then we have one topic not anticipated, which is the purchase of at-home COVID test. Kim?
Sure. I'm echoing.
It was Mike again.
Okay. So, I mean, I did get an email from Missy about this, but, I mean, I know everyone is talking about it, so I figured we better talk about it at a meeting. She had sent an email asking if we should be buying, if we wanted to sign up to buy any kits and Laura and I had actually discussed it last week and, and got a handful. I don't know if you guys are interested in pursuing and buying them for staff or buying them for residents. I do know as of this week, you can get eight free, right? If you have medical insurance, so that might have taken care of the town resident issue. I'm just throwing it out there in case, you know, anyone has any desire to do anything.
I don't have a strong feeling about this, really. You know, I think their, the availability of them is, is improved. So if people want them, there's a way to get them now. I just don't know how we would, what's the program? I mean, we buy a bunch of them and then what? Who's, who's handing them out on the corner of the street? I don't know.
Right.
Right, my, my, I, I agree that I think that, you know, that the availability is there. I mean, if, if you were gonna get a flu test, you would go to your doctor. If you're concerned about having COVID, go to your doctor or go to one of the places that you can get tested. I don't, I don't know that we need to be that. Please, please, Lord.
I, I just have a little bit different take on it. I think that both myself and my, my wife's companies have sent a, you know, a rapid test kit to each employee so that they have that available. So if they, it does turn that they have symptoms, they can actually get a test, you know, immediately before they go out and spread it to anybody else, which seems to be the issue. And I, I don't see a problem with some of the money that we have available to, to make, you know, a rapid test kit available to every employee, maybe every elected official too. I mean, how much would it cost to do that? How difficult would it be to do that? I mean, we didn't even ask for it and they did it. And, and again, it makes it, because the problem is if somebody, somebody has symptoms, they, okay, you gotta get a test. Well, now they're gonna go out to get the test and if they're out of stock, I know we said the availability is getting better, but I still see people on Facebook, you know, asking everybody else, where are they? You know, would, would it be a big deal to, to just provide one of those boxes with two, two rapid tests in it to each employee and maybe each elected official? So if they are coming, gonna come to a meeting and they have the symptoms, we want to make sure that they, that they, that they're negative before they go out. I, I think it would be, I think it's proactive or, or I guess at least see what the Board of Health thinks about it. But I would, I'd be in favor of, of that expenditure to do that, to give it to the employees at least and maybe the elected officials too.
Kim, does, did Missy say, you know, where, where are they buying these from? Is it coming from the state or?
And it was really premature, even in the conversation, they were just becoming available. But I know we started getting emails because we had a webinar basically last Thursday for everyone about how to purchase and where to get them and if you wanted them or whatever. And immediately after that, we started getting emails from every vendor who has them available and we were able to get some within two days delivered. So I think if this was a week ago, I, I think, you know, there was a really concern about a shortage in places. I think places have restocked now. I do think there's a benefit potentially, especially around public safety, but I'm pretty sure Chief Kessler has it handled and I'm, I don't know about Chief Kersey for, but I know he's been providing some tests, I think. You can ask him if he's still here. We've got a couple upstairs now at the Town Hall. We could get a couple more. It, I don't, I don't feel, I, I've, it, it would be good to, it's a good to have, just like the masks that we have and the, and the hand sanitizer, it's good to have on hand.
Well, then, you know, in my mind, it's, if you want to buy some for staff, if they would like to take one, okay. But I don't want to go buying a hundred of them and just, just stashing them in the closet, you know?
All, all I would say is if we're going to get them, I mean, the thing to do is not to stash them in the closet, right, is to deploy them so everybody has them so that if they need to take a test, they don't have to go find one. They'll actually have it and, and the idea is to keep it so that you'll have it if you, if you need to do the tests before you go out or do whatever you have to do. So what's the point of having the test in the closet? You know, if it's in the Town Hall and, and then, you know, you need it and you don't have it, to, to me, it would make sense to give each, again, I say, each employee that goes out into the public, that they would have it at home, we give it to them. So it's, you know, they, they can, they can test and make sure that they're not positive before they go out and spread it, you know?
Okay. Well, I don't think we really needed to have a concrete decision, but a discussion was good and I think, Kim, take that and go back with Missy and.
Right, I, I mostly was looking for what you would want to do around residents because, you know, in Connecticut, the towns were given testing kits through the state and then the towns distributed them. So I think a lot of times people hear that towns are giving them out. And so if you, that way we'll have covered it if they've had a discussion, right?
It was, it was explained to me that, that some towns were giving them, but we weren't because we didn't make the cut because of our financial position within the, within the state.
What?
I'm.
You mean, because we spent all our CARES money?
No, no, because, no, because it's.
Yeah.
It's like everything else.
We're a wealthy community.
Exactly.
Everyone can go buy their own.
I can work with all of that, thank you.
Very good. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Tenny, aye.
Real aye. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everybody.
You too.